The staff are participating virtually. For those of you out there with us today, welcome. To help our audience follow along, I'll state each section of the agenda aloud. We are streaming live on our Virtual Engagement Hub, which is accessible through the Virtual Engagement Hub link on the front page of the city website. We also have an option for the public to listen live by phone by dialing 855-925-2801 and entering the code 4956. We are also broadcasting live on the city's YouTube channel. For public comment, we ask callers to sign up in advance to join the live speaker queue. We will only be taking live comments from those who signed up prior to tonight's meeting. Those callers have been provided instructions on how to participate. Each caller is allowed three minutes to speak for each agenda item. We will hear live comments for up to one hour for each agenda item. A reminder to callers, you will first hear staff inform council that you're next to speak. Then you will hear an automated message letting you know you are unmuted and live in the meeting. You may begin speaking after the automated message. To best ensure staff can support you in case of technical difficulties, we ask that you join the queue no later than the beginning of the agenda item before the agenda item on which you have signed up to speak. Additionally, if you have joined the speaker queue and need to disconnect before your time to speak, please hit star four before hanging up. You can then call back in using the same directions I just shared and staff will enter you back into the speaker queue of your agenda item. I would ask that all those participating in tonight's public comment follow council's Rules of Decorum. The rules include the following. Speakers are only allowed to speak one time during the public comment period for each agenda item. A person may speak only if they have signed up to speak in accordance with the city's procedures. Speaker substitutions at the meeting are not allowed. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak on an agenda item. In general, each agenda item will have up to a total of one hour for public comment. A speaker may not share or relinquish any remaining time they have not used to another speaker. Speakers should not expect council members or city staff to comment on or respond to the speaker's comments during their three minutes. I'll now go through and introduce all council members and staff leadership. Council staff, when I call your name, please say a quick hello. Vice Mayor Smith.
Hello.
Councilwoman Kilgore.
Hello.
Councilwoman Mosley.
Hello.
Councilwoman Roney.
Good evening.
Councilwoman Turner.
Hello.
Councilwoman Whistler.
Hello.
City manager Deborah Campbell.
Hello.
City attorney Brad Branham.
Good evening.
And city clerk Maggie Burlison.
Hello.
Okay, thank you. We're going to begin our agenda and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Council members, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please keep your microphones muted to avoid chaotic audio. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do not have any proclamations on tonight's agenda. So I'm going to move right into the consent agenda. Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Or do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
This is Gwen, so moved.
This is Sage, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. We do have a couple of people signed up to speak under the consent agenda. So callers, you will first hear staff inform council that you're next to speak. Then you will hear an automated message letting you know you are unmuted and live in the meeting. You may begin speaking after the automated message. If you accidentally drop out of the speaker queue, just redial the number and meeting code, press star three to rejoin the speaker queue. You will have three minutes to comment and at the end of the three minutes, you will hear a bell and staff will ask you to wrap up your comment. Go ahead, staff, if you could bring our callers on.
Mayor, our first commenter is Grant Millen from Central Asheville.
Yeah, hi. Everyone can hear me.
We can hear you.
Great. So I am interested in seeing the reparations commission outcome, final report. I just want, there's no doubt that slavery happened and today, according to your own Office of Equity Inclusion 2019, Equity Inclusion Action Report, 71% of Asheville's African Americans live in public housing. That kind of says segregation is real today. But the way things are going, it seems like there's promises of $2 million and the plan comes later. There's sort of an outline so far. There was the engagement sessions in June and now there's 52 acres of prime Central Asheville land dedicated to reparations. And when I saw that recently, it just kind of grew. Here's some parts of land, don't know the providence of maybe, you know, maybe we might find out which folks from the 60s actually were impacted by urban renewal. And now we're at 52 acres of land. And the valuation, I have a lot of business education, the valuation, the monetary amount of that value assessed by someone in the real estate industry who's not City of Asheville employee, I would think, and not the project manager. You know, this is about, this, because some of the agenda item F, I think it is, is about the project manager. I don't see real estate assessment in her background. Her other qualifications look very interesting, but this, this real estate valuation of this, the 52 acres that are now part of reparations, it needs to be elucidated and shared with the public. And I, for whatever, for everything I'm seeing about this project manager, she looks great. I'd like to see her, what her company is about. It's something having to do with IT and equity and healthcare. But her web, she doesn't seem to have a website. That can happen, consultants don't always have a website. But now she's really public. She's doing a very high profile activity with City of Asheville and both, kind of the whole world will be watching this reparations process. Her, what her company is about, kind of how she's packaging what they're doing is it can become forward.
Thank you, Mr. Millen, that's the end of your time.
Counsel, our next caller is Jonathan Wayne Scott from Asheville.
Hey, everybody, this is Jonathan Wayne Scott. I was also calling in to weigh in on item F. And I'm glad to see that the reparations process is moving forward. And I'm glad that the project manager is somebody who is local and understands the community. And I believe equity has been given the Mosley seal of approval. So I feel pretty confident about their abilities to essentially provide us with an independent audit, if you will, of systemic racism here. You know, as we need to ensure that our budget and plans and policies do not continue to perpetuate harm while we move toward the healing and repair and liberation of white supremacy culture here in Asheville. So I do want to, interestingly enough though, correct the previous caller who once again has cited some sort of information from the Department of Equities webpage or something that says that 70-something percent of Asheville's African American population lives in public housing and that's not true. That was mentioned in the first night of the reparations lecture series by another person from the community and it was corrected on the third night. So there might be some misinformation going out there. I just want to say thanks for moving that forward. And to whatever degree, there might be some missing skills in the project manager. I do believe that the commission to be formed should be of about 25 people, from what I've heard. So I believe that there's a lot of talent and perspectives to draw into this process. And I just want to thank you for bringing it forward and moving it along. All right, I'll talk to you guys in just a little bit during public comment and informal discussion. Thanks.
Okay, I believe we only had two people signed up to speak under the consent agenda. And that concludes our comment on the consent agenda. If there aren't any other questions, I will take a roll call vote, as is required for our virtual meeting format. Okay, beginning with Councilwoman Mosley.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roney.
Aye.
Councilwoman Turner.
Aye.
Councilwoman Whistler.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Vice Mayor Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kilgore.
Aye.
Okay, we've approved the consent agenda. Now, moving on to presentations, we have one presentation on the agenda tonight and that is the manager's report. And I'm going to turn it over to the city manager, Deborah Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor, and again, hello, everyone. As you, if you have the agenda, my manager's report will be actually given by Todd O'Koote Chaney, our planning director. And he is going to provide us with an update on the hotel regulations and hotel overlay district that council approved just recently. What I do need to go on record, though, is saying I deeply apologize because usually I like to get the manager's report, the presentations posted in a timely manner. Usually it's the day before or at the latest. It's at noon today and I did not make that deadline. And I want to go on record that that's, I own that and I deeply apologize. So with that, I will turn it over to Todd for him to provide you with the update. Thank you.
Thanks, Deborah, and good evening, Mayor and council members. Todd O'Koote Chaney, Planning and Urban Design Director. Next slide, please. As Deborah mentioned, the purpose of the presentation tonight is really to give you all an update on the last six or seven months since council adopted the new hotel regulations. There are several key takeaways from the presentation this evening, including that the regulations are working as they're intended, that the text amendments are needed for clarification purposes, the design review committee membership should be adjusted, and that staff is currently engaging the community on the public benefits table. Next slide, please. Again, to give you some background about this update to you all tonight, as a recap, that city council adopted the new hotel development regulations just in February of this year. And this followed an 18-month-long development moratorium to help us study the issue in partnership with the Urban Land Institute. Due to the complexity of the hotel standards, council asked for periodic updates from staff to review and assess the code. And this is about seven months since the initial adoption of those regulations from council and the first update to you all. Next slide, please. Another recap of some of the goals of the hotel development standards that you all adopted several months ago. The goal of the standards are to improve predictability and transparency in the hotel development review process, to establish where hotels are appropriate in the city, to leverage hotel development to achieve community benefits and to limit impacts of new hotels, and finally, to enhance the design of hotels. Next slide, please. There were three key elements of those hotel development standards and I'll review each of these separately and give you a brief overview on how each of these key elements are working. Next slide, please. The first key element and how it's working, this involves the Hotel Overlay District. This is the new zoning map that was created to establish where small and hotels might be located or permitted in the city. And the development standards, these are all the text amendments that were also adopted by city council. Next slide, please. Between February and August of this year, there have been a total of five hotel projects that have been submitted to the city. Three large hotels and two small hotels. As a reminder, a large hotel is defined as over 35 rooms. All those hotels are located in downtown. Four of those hotels have had the option to meet the public benefit standard. This is, as a recap, the public benefit standard is an incentivized-based approach that you all adopted to try to encourage hotels to provide community benefits, such as affordable housing, paying to a reparations fund or paying living wages, as an example. There was one hotel that city council recently adopted, which was the Four Point Sheridan Project to the north on this map, close to the I-240 interstate. And that project was the one hotel that technically did not meet our public benefit standard because of the size of the hotel. That automatically triggered city council review. So the four other projects that have been submitted are all under our threshold for council review. So these four other hotel projects would have the option of being reviewed and approved by city staff if they provide the requisite number of public benefits. These projects are 52 Broadway Street, which is a small boutique hotel with five total hotel rooms, 120 Biltmore Avenue, which would contain 40 hotel rooms, the Moxie Hotel, which would be in addition to the current Aloft Hotel, that would have 115 rooms. So that would be the largest hotel that's proposed that would be just under the city council review threshold. And then finally, 44 Collier Avenue, which would contain 24 hotel rooms. Of these projects, staff has estimated that there's a potential for between $650,000 and $800,000 for public benefits, including contributions to the, either the Affordable Housing and/or Reparations Fund, a monetary contribution for neighborhood improvements, or to public art. Additional non-monetary public benefits that are conceptually included in these projects include paying living wages for at least one of the projects, possibly including a Green Globes, which is a green building certification, as well as adaptive reuse of an historic building. Next slide, please. There are some key observations that staff has made for the Hotel Overlay District and for the new development standards. Some of those observations include that staff feels that the overlay is currently working as it's intended, that all the new hotel projects, as I mentioned, are located in areas where we have mapped them as a possible permitted use. Staff also has observed that the UDO could use some clarifying language to support staff's intention and interpretation of the code, including that off-street parking is required for all lodging uses, including hotels that are located in the downtown area, and that hotels below the threshold for council review may be reviewed as either a Level One or Level Two application, depending upon the size. So these are just several clarifications that, again, are intended to meet our original intention when we proposed the new text amendments to you several months ago. The final clarification is an observation that we feel is needed to address and to better distinguish between what we would call an extended stay hotel versus a condo hotel, which is a land use that acts more like a short-term vacation rental. Several of these projects have included, what we would call it, an extended stay type unit, which includes, might include a living room space or a kitchen. Those are meant to be hotels. They have the same, mainly the same impact as a standard hotel and they're meant to accommodate business travelers as well as potentially families that want that extra space. However, we've seen some recent proposals with some of these projects where they are defined as a condo hotel, which is actually not currently defined in our zoning regulations. And what we'd like to do is to better distinguish what, how we would define those condo hotels and to better clarify language for what we mean by hotel. Next slide, please. The second key element is the public benefits table. Next slide, please. Some of staff's observations for public benefits are that there's currently not enough data to comment on how the point threshold is working. As I mentioned, we have these four hotel projects that would meet the public benefit system and could be approved at a staff level. However, we're still trying to determine all the exact benefits that will be proposed or provided by those projects. We're not quite able to have a great determination at this time as to how well that point threshold is currently working. Staff is also working to determine if public benefits should be incorporated into other zoning districts throughout the city and/or revised in existing hotel standards. And staff would like to provide more information to council at our next update in six months. Staff is also currently developing a system to track the public benefits and points, as well as a system to track the revenue associated with those benefits. Next slide, please. For the key third element and how it's working, I'll now review how the revised design review process is working. Next slide, please. Again, as a recollection and recap, council approved a new joint design review committee to review all hotel projects, as well as all larger projects for other types of land uses that occur in the downtown and the riverfront area. The Joint Design Review Committee has nine members. Council appoints four qualified members from the Downtown Commission and four from the Asheville Area Riverfront Redevelopment Commission to serve on that committee. And the Joint Design Review Committee appoints one member from the community as an at-large member for a total of nine members. Next slide, please. Some of staff's recommendations include that the design review committee has been formed, that there have been four meetings that have been held to date in which the committee has reviewed nine total cases, including two hotel projects. So there have been several projects that have been reviewed that have been other types of land uses, such as residential or commercial projects. All four Downtown Commission seats have been filled, but only three seats from the Asheville Area Riverfront Redevelopment Commission has been filled. Therefore, one seat remains vacant on this new joint design review committee. The prior design subcommittees of the Downtown Riverfront Commissions, as an observation, had additional at-large seats, which allowed them to add expertise for design review from the community. Next slide, please. So staff is suggesting that there could be a possible amendment to the makeup of the design review committee. As a reminder, on the left, the current committee makeup includes four members from the Downtown Commission, four members from the Riverfront Commission, and the one at-large member that's appointed by the design review committee. And that equals a total of nine members. Of those nine members, council appoints eight of those. One recommendation could be to have a more equal distribution where there would be three members from the Downtown Commission, three members from the Riverfront Commission, and three at-large members, also totaling nine members. And then council would appoint all nine members. Some of the benefits of this potential change would mean that it could be easier to fill seats. As a reminder, we've been having some issues trying to fill all nine seats currently. And another benefit is that there's potential to expand the design expertise, as well as the diversity of that committee, by having additional at-large members being appointed to that committee by council. Next slide, please. So just a recap of some of the key takeaways. Again, staff feels that the regulations are currently working as intended, that there are several text amendments that are needed for clarification purposes, that the design review committee membership should or could be adjusted, and that staff is engaging the community on public benefits. Next slide, please. Some of the next steps include an update to the Downtown Riverfront Redevelopment Commissions to provide a similar presentation on how the development regulations for hotels are working and to also discuss the current membership of the design review committee with those commissions. That would happen in September. In fall of this year, staff would work on drafting text amendments. These would be amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance or our zoning regulations for hotels to capture some of those clarifications that I mentioned. In the winter of this year, we would review the UDO amendments with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then early 2022, staff would present those UDO amendments to city council for review and adoption. The next city council update from staff would be in spring 2022. And then during the fall of this year and into the spring of next year, staff would continue to engage with the community to determine if public benefits should be expanded to other zoning districts or revised for the existing hotel standards and whether we should update the current table to consider some other public benefits or make any other revisions to those. And that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
And Mayor, the only thing that I would like to add is just a huge thank you to staff for the work today I've done and the ability to just continue to monitor these standards. And I think we want to really begin to, when we have these new standards adopted, to make this kind of the rule of bringing you all that information about how your policies and regulations that you all have adopted and passed, the impact that they're having on the community and whether we need adjustments, not to wait five years and come back and unfortunately have some unintended consequences. So thank you, Todd, for your and your staff's work on this. And I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the presentations portion of our agenda.
This is Kim. I had a question about the report. Is it possible to go, is it possible to go back to slide five? If not, I can pull it up and reference it. Or it might be slides. Thank you. So here we see that in bullet three, it says the potential for $650,000 to $800,000 for public benefits. And I just wanted to confirm that that includes the Woodfin Project of Four Point Sheridans.
That figure, Councilmember Roney, does not include the Four Point Sheridan Project. This would be for the four other projects that would meet the public benefit standard.
Thank you. And of those four projects for which this number addresses, were there decisions made outlining which projects are, what percentage of that would be for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund or reparations? Do we understood it to be an either-or? Or is that a future council decision?
We're currently working with the applicants to clarify from these projects how much of that monetary contribution would go toward affordable housing and/or reparations. We do allow applicants to do like a 50-50 split if they choose for their project where they could provide money or contribute money that would go toward affordable housing and reparations or an option to do either-or of those public benefits. I believe only one project of those four has mentioned that they has mentioned that they would like to contribute toward the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and that's the 44 Cotter Avenue project. The three other projects have not committed yet to us or clarified which fund they would help contribute to.
Thank you for that clarification. That's all.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Todd. This is Sage. You know, just to explore a little bit on that, I'm a little concerned about the process by which these contributions or the funds are chosen. And I'm not clear if, after what happened at the last hearing, you know, if staff is deciding, if the applicant is deciding, if council is deciding where the money is landing. Could you help me understand what what is supposed to happen? And if we are allowed to weigh in on that, it seems, I'm not sure that I feel comfortable telling the folks where to donate to.
There are currently two, what I would call, process improvements that we're looking on in terms of kind of getting more information from the applicant as to which public benefits they would like to select and how they're chosen. The first is that we're working on an electronic application where the applicant would have to tell us upfront when they submit their application, at least conceptually, which public benefits they are opting to choose. Currently, we don't have a process in place for that to happen, you know, at the beginning of the application process. The way that this will work is we will not issue a certificate of occupancy for the project until all the funds or other public benefits are provided or committed to by the applicant. So that's kind of our threshold right now. And an applicant could hypothetically could change or change their mind during the application process as to which public benefits they choose. But we would like to try to outline all of those upfront at the beginning in the application process. The other process improvement, we've been having a lot of conversations over the last couple of months with community members. One group, Legacy Neighborhoods Coalition, that we've been meeting with has provided us a lot of comments on the public benefits table. And one improvement that we could make is that for these projects, there's a required developer neighborhood meeting that has to occur at the beginning of the project. And we are working on currently internally in the city sort of a manual or guidelines for kind of clarifying and providing more information for how those meetings should occur and what type of information should be presented and discussed with the community. We think as part of that guideline process for those neighborhood developer meetings that we can include in there that the developer should also discuss what public benefits they might intend on, including as part of their project, to get feedback from those neighbors that would be impacted by the project, and also give an opportunity to the neighborhood to weigh in on maybe what some of their needs are in the community.
Okay, any other questions before we move on to public hearings?
The only thing I would ask is, you know, as we're, as we're looking at this, one of the things I had suggested, and I don't really know where the suggestion went, but through the the process is, you know, to the extent that the developer doesn't have a, isn't like, I think we should ask the developers, like, you know, if you don't want to make a decision, you don't want to pick, then you just leave that up to either staff or council kind of in the budget process to say where the money should go, whether it's reparations or or affordable housing. I just think sometimes if the developer doesn't have a strong opinion one way or the other, it may feel very political for him to make that decision. And like, I'd rather council make that decision again, if they don't, if the developer doesn't feel strongly one way or the other. It's just one thing I would ask staff to consider.
You know, on that note, I wonder if, is there any is there any legal reason, and I'm not, this may need to be reflected on, but I'm just thinking, you know, if it's an Affordable Housing Trust Fund donation, it's probably tax deductible. But if it's designated for some other purpose or eventually used for some other purpose, maybe it's not tax deductible. I'm just throwing this out there. Maybe there's some logistical reason why it has to be determined on the front end and can't just, you know, developers can't just say, look, you know, council, you decide later at some later date. I'm not expecting an answer to that question right this minute, but but I would agree with Gwen, if there's not a barrier to doing it to, you know, some tax reason or something else. I mean, I think we are going to run into developers that don't care to designate and would rather council, future councils make that determination as spending, you know, as opportunities come up that require funding. So, you know, I don't know, I don't, but I'm just throwing that out there. I don't, I don't know if there's one reason you have to do it one way or another. I could see why staff might not be able to be the deciding body.
We can certainly see how we can better align this process with our budget cycle and capital improvement processes and all of that.
Thank you for the feedback.
This is Sage again. So can I just get clarity on the process from here? Are we trying to update these or are we coming back in six months?
Our, part of our next steps would be that staff would actually come before council first, before our next one-year update. We'd like to move forward with some of the some of the observations of the text amendments that we would make to the UDO and come to council early next year to present the details of those changes. And then that would be followed by the one-year update, where we can hopefully get a better picture of, you know, how many hotel projects have been submitted and what types of public benefits that they're providing, as well as provide some additional feedback on what we've heard from the community on the public benefits incentivized system.
So I think Councilmember Turner, we're saying we're doing both and, we're going to bring back proposed text amendments as well as provide you with an update of additional potential changes, especially to the public benefits.
In six months. Okay, so I just want to have my concern around.
Text amendments sooner than text, text amendments sooner than six months.
I just want to share my concern around what might happen in those six months with the extended stay language, and whether or not we might see some more applications that we intended to be under the southern umbrella.
I have that concern as well. You know, I know that drafting these changes is really challenging. But if there's any way to to address the, that condo motel concept, you know, first, since that seems to be sort of an emergency, that would be great.
We can definitely work on these other more, you know, prior, bigger priority text amendments and do that in a more expedited manner.
That would be terrific. Thank you.
And then do we, are we making a recommendation regarding the design review committee or is that for a later date as well?
If you have any thoughts you'd like to share now on that, otherwise, you know, we would come forward in the next few months to, you know, present some possible changes to that makeup. But if you have any comments or any feedback you'd like to provide now, I'm happy to take that back to my staff.
And Councilmember Roni, I think we're only suggesting that is because we've got in our timeline to talk to those two groups before we finalize any next steps on that issue.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
If I may share too, Councilwoman Roni, as the liaison to both of the riverfront and the downtown commission, we had meetings recently and discussed it, and we're generally on board with that idea.
And I can say too, that I like the idea.
Thank you. Thanks, Todd.
Okay, now we'll move on to public hearings. We had three scheduled, but two of them need to be continued. So do I have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing to consider an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance to update open space requirements until December 14th, 2021?
Still moved.
Okay, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Councilwoman Roni.
Aye.
Councilwoman Turner.
Aye.
Councilwoman Whistler.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Vice Mayor Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kilgore.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Mosley.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, public hearing item B. We have a public hearing to consider conditional zoning request for 200 Villas Court from RM8 residential multifamily medium-density district to residential expansion conditional zone. Also included in the project are 16 existing townhomes located on Villas, Villas Court. And we'll have Planner Shannon Tuck here to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. If we could go ahead and advance to the first slide, please. So as the mayor indicated, this property is a conditional zoning request for approximately 5.3 acres located in the sort of northwest portion of the city. So this is way out on the edge of the city's jurisdiction, and you can see from these exhibit maps that it's essentially a peninsula of city zoning that kind of sticks out into the county's jurisdiction. So the subject property, as well as the parcels to the south, are all zoned RM8. That is one of the city's multifamily zoning designations, and it's a medium-density multifamily designation. The parcels to the west, north, and east are all Buncombe County zoning. So south of Cedar Hill Road, this is R3 zoning, which is very similar to Asheville's RM8 zoning. And then across Cedar Hill Road, you have open use zoning. The request is to rezone this property from RM8 to residential expansion conditional zone, and that is to allow for a multifamily development that has over 50 units. It's a 72-unit development. And this is classified as a Level 3, which requires a conditional zoning to one of the city's expansion districts. And because it's a residential project, it's the residential expansion district that is being proposed. So as the mayor introduced this project, she read off a number of addresses. That is because back in 2005, there was a Level 2 plan to develop this property as a townhome community. And steps were taken to go ahead and initiate that project, and in fact, 10 of the units were constructed and platted and sold. There are another six lots that were platted but not developed. So the cluster of four sublots that you see to the north, that is one of the existing clusters of townhomes. And then that larger cluster in the center of the property, that's the second cluster. The six lots below the top cluster are, they were, as I mentioned, they were platted but not developed. And those properties are owned by the applicant and will be recombined into the larger parcel as part of this development. Next slide, please. So we always review the city's future land use map to make sure that any changes are consistent, or if a change to the land use map might be necessary. So this property, as well as the parcels to the south, are designated residential neighborhood. This is a low-density residential designation in the comprehensive plan. However, even though it is low-density, it does allow for some infill multifamily or to allow for transition to higher density as the city sort of builds out. And this project is a little bit of a hybrid. It has some single-family, those existing townhomes that were originally constructed in 2005. And it will have some new multifamily that will be built in and around those existing units. So we do feel that it is consistent with that designation. So as a result, no change to the future land use map will be required. Next slide, please. So you can see from the aerial imagery that the property, as I mentioned, had been in, or the construction of a residential community had begun in 2005. It was a Level 2. I believe it was 40 some units. However, after some of the units were constructed, we entered the Great Recession. All construction stopped, and the project has been just sort of languishing ever since. The applicant now would like to complete the project and kind of fill in around where development had been anticipated as part of that original plan. It has evolved some to include more units than originally proposed and is now switching to offer some multifamily apartment units as opposed to the single-family townhome units. There, the applicant also in 2005, in addition to building those 10 units, had also started the infrastructure and completed quite a bit of the infrastructure, including the surface parking that you see in the aerial imagery, as well as the sewer and water and stormwater. As a result of this project and some new standards for that infrastructure, much of that infrastructure will have to be reconstructed. And that is not all of it, but much of it. I also wanted to point out in the sort of southeast corner there, in that lower right-hand corner, you see a little bit of impervious surface, that there is a pump station, a sewer pump station there. I wanted to point that out because the southern boundary of this parcel is attributed to Smith Mill Creek. And so that is a jurisdictional water. We do have a 30-foot protected aquatic buffer along that. But that is an existing encroachment that the applicant is asking to just kind of leave as is. Next slide, please. So this is the site plan for the proposed development. You can see that the entrance into the properties or the entrances into the property remain the same with access on the north end from Cedar Hill Road and then on the west side from Pisgahview Road. So this is a full access on both directions, on both entrances. So you have access on either end into the community. The new construction is highlighted in yellow. There are seven new buildings. That totals 72 units. The three, three buildings kind of on the northern end are two-story buildings with eight units each, so four units per floor. And then you have four three-story buildings that have 12 units each. And of course, this is in addition to the eight, 10 existing units for a total of 82 units. As I mentioned, much of the infrastructure will have to be reconstructed. So in the end, we will have 118 surface parking spaces to support those 82 units, which does meet, fall within the city's minimum maximum requirements for off-street parking. We also have a fair amount of open space, which also will include the tree canopy preservation areas for this project, most of that around the perimeter. But there are some pockets kind of scattered in between the buildings and the tributary to Smith Mill Creek with that protected aquatic buffer. Not necessarily part of the site spans, site plan specifically, but this project is also committing that 10% of the units will be deed restricted to be affordable to those earning 80% of AMI for a minimum period of 20 years. And this is reflected in the project conditions for this conditional zoning. Next slide, please. There are some very basic building elevations included in your meeting materials to kind of give you a sense. It's a relatively sort of standard multifamily, moderately sized multifamily building. As I mentioned, four units per floor, two floors is the first building type. Next slide. And then there's the three-story, 12-unit building type that adds that additional floor. Next slide, please. The applicant has also provided a number of graphic renderings. You can see this, this first one provides an overview of the property. The north end is the Cedar Hill Road end. So as you enter the property, you have those two-story, eight-unit buildings. You pass some of that existing, those existing townhomes coming into the center of the property. You see more of the existing townhomes. And then on the sort of southern or western side, you have the four three-story units. And you have the, you have sort of a wooded edge, including that creek on the southern end of the property. Next slide. This is a view from Cedar Hill Road looking into the property. So those are the two-story, eight-unit buildings there on the top. And if you look back, you'll see the three-story buildings. Next slide. From the southern end, looking across the aquatic buffer, that's the back of the three-story buildings. And then you can see some of those existing units there in the center, and then some of the other units further north. Next slide. Oh, and then this last image is an interior view from the parking lot, just sort of kind of looking up into the community, just to kind of get a sense of how the buildings relate to each other and to the ground plane. Next slide. So the review process for this project's relatively straightforward, since it's not located in a design review area. So after technical review, the project had one stop at the Planning and Zoning Commission, which was held back in July. The project was unanimously approved at that meeting with, I believe, only one comment from a member of the public. Next slide. All of our conditional zonings come with a list of project conditions. That's Exhibit E included in your meeting materials. We always try to identify the different development standards that might need modification. In this case, two of the three modifications deal with existing infrastructure. So that's the driveway and the encroachment into the aquatic buffer. That's due to the work that had already been performed from that 2005 master plan. It's really just the sidewalk that's being modified. Residential expansion requires 10-foot-wide sidewalks throughout the development. And given the context of this particular development, the applicant is requesting a six-foot-wide sidewalk along the frontage on Cedar Hill Road and Pisgahview Road. With, and that also includes a five-foot buffer. So the sidewalk would be set back from the road to make it a more comfortable environment. And then that would transition to a five-foot sidewalk around the parking areas in between the buildings. Beyond the technical modifications, the rest of the conditions typically just describe the project or the features of the project. So specifically, this is a multifamily residential infill project that completes a previously abandoned master plan. 72 units. 10% of those units will be deed restricted to be affordable based on the city's standards. We do have sidewalk connections throughout the development, open space, tree canopy preservation, landscaping, the basic site improvements. Next slide, please. In conclusion, staff does concur with the Planning and Zoning Commission and recommends approval of this conditional zoning request. Be happy to answer any questions, or I believe the applicant is in the meeting, and they may wish to add more to this presentation.
Sage, go ahead, ask, you got a question?
I do. Shannon, thank you for the presentation. Can you speak to the buffer? I noticed a couple things that were just considered cons, and the only one that really alarmed me was the 5,400 square feet of aquatic buffer. And there just wasn't an alternative around that, or is there anything where you can tell us about it?
Yeah, that encroachment is due to that existing infrastructure. So there is a pump station in that southeast corner of the property that I pointed out on that aerial image. That is, that's the bulk of that encroachment. And then any additional, I'm not sure, there may be just a little bit more that is a result of the having to reconstruct some of that infrastructure. But essentially, they won't be adding to the encroachment. It's really just what's already there.
Thank you. That helped a lot.
And I'll invite the applicant to correct me if I misstated that.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry. I was assuming that the developer was gonna speak, because I was gonna ask them a couple questions.
Okay. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. If they want to, does anybody, do you want to hear from them, Sage, or you just want to ask them some questions?
Sure. I didn't quite see them on screen.
I don't know which one of these boxes is the developer, so in my, on my screen.
I think Mike LaVoye is the engineer for the project.
There we go.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
Thank you for being here to answer a couple questions. I was just wondering specifically to the 10% of the units being affordable, if any of them are accepting vouchers. That's not really an engineering question.
At this time, it's too early to really know that for sure, but we'll be working with Paul D'Angelo on this stuff.
Okay.
Before, we'll be working hand-in-hand. You know, I really feel certain in the fact that really the 72 units will mostly hit that mark, which we're really excited about. You know, we plan right now to sell the units as condos. It could be that someone comes in possibly and scoops it up from us and wants to do apartments there. But that 10% will lock those in. But our plan at this time is to be able to sell these units somewhere in that $200,000 range. So we're really excited about that.
Wow.
Because there's not much, as we all know, on the market in and around Asheville that's even close to being considered something to be workforce housing.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm floored by that. That's incredible. Thank you for sharing that. And if I may, just share that there's an organization known as Thrive that links up voucher holders that have been waiting and preparing for the mortgage payment part and doing the training and stuff. And maybe that's a connection you could make to connect with some buyers.
Right. And who was that again, you said?
Thrive Asheville.
Thrive.
Local nonprofit.
But I can tell you, Mr. LaVoye, 200,000, and that price point, they will be gone before they can eat.
That's right.
I mean, I'm just telling you, it's crazy. Yeah.
I'll buy one.
Hey, I'm telling you. Please, I can tell.
Well, and that's one of the reasons we're asking for, of course, the addition. Shannon, thank you for your presentation. It was great. That's really why I didn't really interject much, because she really covered most of the points. You know, and one of the reasons we're asking for the additional units is, one, because we feel like it's a great urban infill area right there. And then we also, you know, in order to upgrade the project to abide by all the current UDO standards, you know, it's just gonna require quite a bit more construction to be able to offer the product and the affordability that we want. We need those extra units to help pull it along.
Thank you very much. And the reason I say that is pretty much anything that you sell, whether, you know, condos, whatever, under 200,000, I could tell you, you've got hundreds of buyers out here right now that would, you know, swoop up, because it's not there. It's not there. And it's a part, and I'm so happy to see a developer actually building something in that range. And usually when they come before council, you know, no one really talks about the price they're gonna be, you know, because they know that it's not gonna be, you know, affordable, but yours are, and I greatly appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
This is Kim. I have a question that's more for staff. So we're making some, I guess, concessions around the sidewalk width, and we have a number of ADA compliance issues in the city. So how will we be ensuring that we don't exasperate our ADA compliance issues while we're making exemptions for sidewalks?
So the compliance with accessibility standards will be part of the technical review, the final step of the review process for this project. So that's when we will look at some of those really detailed elevations of the sidewalk and things of that nature. Even the conceptual technical review, however, looks for any red flags related to technical compliance. Like, if we know there are really steep slopes and they're showing a sidewalk, we'll check it at that stage. We do not anticipate any accessibility issues with the sidewalk. It's just a width. The minimum width for accessibility purposes of a sidewalk is, I think it can range from 36 to 48 inches, depending on the context. And, you know, the sidewalks can be 60, or six feet, so well more, you know, well beyond what's required for accessibility. And a 10-foot sidewalk is really meant for kind of mixed-use urban environments, which this isn't. So staff's comfortable with the six-foot sidewalk that's being requested. We think that that's appropriate in this particular context.
Well, I am glad for the affordable units, even if they are only at 80% of AMI and not yet accepting vouchers, for sure, because it is four tenths of a mile from the bus stop and 20 minutes from the grocery store. So I appreciate having some options near transit.
Yeah, we have already, we have already graded this way, and we don't, the accessibility will go from Cedar all the way over to Pisgahview. You'll be able to roll a wheelchair all the way through there.
I just had one more question. It looks like in the northwest area, there was a staging area, maybe an old septic. Any plans to build another building there? I mean, can we squeeze a few more units on there? Not doable?
Well, with the current open space and tree save area, that's what's taking up that area.
I wonder.
We also have a neighbor that's there that we do know, and, you know, we want to try to protect him and his house as best possible. He does have a septic system that will be connected in the future to our public gravity sewer system. But still, with him in mind, we're gonna keep that as a tree save and open space area.
What a good neighbor you are. Thank you.
Looks like Tekun Gachalk has joined us, and raise his hand.
I'm just trying to be extra polite. So I just wanted to kind of draw back.
He's gonna tell everybody who you are.
Yeah, so my name is Tekun Gachalk. I am an attorney here in Asheville, and I represent the applicant here. And I'm actually quite familiar with this project over many years of work, and was gonna chime in on a few of the points raised a minute ago to just draw the bigger picture and let everyone know this is really, what's before you is really, I think, a great example of a developer making lemonade out of lemons. The lemons being the, a project that got interrupted by the failing economy in, you know, '07 and '08. And now there's, since then, all of the development approvals have expired, which in a way ends up being a good thing, because it ends up back in front of the council, as it is now, at an even better project, at far more units that are really, you know, it could, it could have been this to begin with, and probably should have been this level of development, given the needs of the city population for more affordable units. And I'm using affordable in, you know, small a, you know, not, not the technical affordable housing. So I would just, you know, draw that bigger picture for the group so that everyone can kind of see that. I mean, this is 15 years in the making. It's finally coming to fruition. It's helping this neighborhood, because you've got these sort of, you know, lonely, if you will, existing units that have had a, you know, incomplete infrastructure surrounding them. And this, you know, this is gonna make it a real neighborhood and, you know, provide some much-needed housing. So that's, those are the points I want to make. Thanks for the time.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing and close the public hearing, because we didn't have anyone sign up to speak on this one. Do I have a motion to approve? I'm sorry. Do I have a motion?
This is Sage, and I'll make a motion to approve the conditional zoning request for the property located at 200 Villas Court from residential multifamily medium-density RM8 to residential expansion conditional zone, RES, EXP, whatever. And find that the request is reasonable in the public interest, consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and meets the development needs of the community in that the request, one, increases the supply of housing in a rapidly growing and evolving part of the city, and, two, sets aside a percentage of the total number of units to be affordable to those earning 80% of AMI.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll take a roll call vote, beginning with Councilwoman Turner.
Aye.
Councilwoman Whistler.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Vice Mayor Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kilgore.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mosley.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roney.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you, folks, for joining us on that item. Our last public hearing is Item C, and here again, we need a motion to continue this matter until September 28th, 2021.
So moved, Antonette.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna do a roll call, but Councilwoman Whistler.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Vice Mayor Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kilgore.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mosley.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roney.
Aye.
Councilwoman Turner.
Aye.
Okay, that concludes our public hearings. Moving along on our agenda, we have no unfinished business items. We have two items of new business tonight. The first item of new business is a resolution authorizing the city manager to create a program of work for the American Rescue Plan Act state and local government fiscal recovery funds to fund the following categories: affordable housing, care for aging residents, city infrastructure, community communications, domestic violence prevention and assistance, food systems, homelessness services, revenue losses, small business recovery, and workforce development. And City Manager Deborah Campbell will introduce this item.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I will only say that you all have had a number of work sessions around this subject matter. We've tried to provide you with, obviously, the kind of the scope of the program and the funding criteria. But we have Patricia Rosenberg, who's gonna provide you with just a really, really brief overview. And we'll hear from you all once she provides this subject.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. And as Ms. Campbell mentioned, we have had two council work sessions in July and August. What we've spent most of this time of the work sessions, and really the work the staff has done, has really been focused on identifying categories to be funded using these funds. The idea being that in the guidance that the U.S. Treasury Department released, there are, there's a long list of eligible uses for these funds. We're trying to narrow that scope before we take it out for a community RFP. So we had the two work sessions in July and August. Additionally, we have public comment at your last council meeting. And tonight, we're asking you to vote on the categories for funding. And again, these are categories that we recommended, that we're recommending, and they were determined through a whole bunch of different resources. We looked through public engagement data that we have been collecting over the past few years. We put our categories through an internal evaluation process. We looked at the feedback we received from you all through a council survey, as well as through the work sessions and at the last council meeting. And additionally, we listened to public comment at our last, at the last council meeting. Our goal after tonight is to issue an RFP for these funds. We're aiming to have that issued by the end of next week, so by September 24th. And that will include the categories that are decided tonight. The RFP will be open until November 1st. While the RFP is open for proposals, we plan to hold an information session for interested applicants in October, and we'll also plan to conduct extensive community outreach during that time. And then eventually, we will come with staff recommendations for a final council vote on awards in December. Are there any questions about the ARPA funding at this point? Are any of the categories being recommended?
This is Kim. Thank you for that presentation, Patricia. So because we are experiencing overlapping emergencies, while some of these categories may have other funding options, I'm concerned that we're making a bet that federal infrastructure funds might get passed to the state and that they won't be already absorbed at the state level, which is why I'm appealing to my colleagues to consider our own climate justice initiative by adding climate change to the categories as part of our council goals for both an equitable recovery from the pandemic and reimagining public safety, which we identified in our retreat, in hopes that will also help us to meet our goals in our Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan. I am prepared to make a motion to include that in the list of categories.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Staff, you know, I hear Councilwoman Roney's recommendation. We already have a very long list here and a pretty finite amount of resources in this particular pot. I, you know, I don't have, I I, you know, I don't have, I personally don't have any concerns about adding another item. I just wonder how realistic it is that the funds will, will cover all these different categories. But I defer to staff to say whether or not that seems, is practical or not.
Well, as part of the work session, that we had just a brief discussion about whether, with the use of this fund, should we focus and be very strategic? Because again, we have already made some kind of tentative commitments to particularly the issue of homelessness and a couple of other things that we have, we are either considering or moving forward on. And yes, there is a concern. However, I don't, I don't think that it will have that negative impact because we may not get, you know, proposals as it relates to all of these categories. So we'll, we'll just, you know, we'll just have to, have to wait and see if there are concerns. We can come back and say, and we will be coming back and saying, you know, we're, we're getting these amount of requests in these particular categories. Do you want us to continue on and try to solicit or not? So it's a long way of saying, Mayor, I, I think it's, I think it's okay. And we'll just see how the RFPs come back. And I don't know, Patricia or Tony, if you all have any, any other concerns that I may not be aware of.
No, actually, I think you've covered that really well. And I agree with, with everything that you said. I guess at this point, we should probably emphasize that we're trying to narrow the list of categories from what we identified originally in July. And so at this point, the categories that you decide tonight will be issued through an RFP. It doesn't mean that you necessarily will have to fund projects under all of these categories. It means that we won't accept projects that do not fall under any of these categories that are decided tonight. I don't know if that helps clarify.
Shall I make a motion?
Well, I'm looking to see, based on what Patricia just said, I got a little confused. We do, we have a suggested motion that lists all the items that I recited on the agenda. Patricia, you just said, you, I think what you were saying is, hey, when we started the work session process, we had many more categories. You're not looking to further whittle down the list that's now in the suggested motion. Okay, so Councilwoman Roney, one way to do this would just be to add your item to the list in the motion. You know, that would be one way to do, that would be my suggestion, process wise. Less than anyone feels differently.
So I've moved to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to create a program of work for the American Rescue Plan Act State and Local Government Fiscal Recovery Funds that allocates the fund to the following categories: affordable housing, care for aging residents, city infrastructure, community communication, domestic violence prevention and assistance, food systems, homelessness services, revenue losses, small business recovery, climate change, and workforce development.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments before I do a roll call vote?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't get who seconded that.
Shanika.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Oh, by the way, we did public comment on this at the last meeting, so we were not taking further public comment this evening. So.
I have a question. I just want to clarify that in the future, if we are going to be doing public comment, if we could check that in our check-ins, because I had different information from our check-ins, that we would have public comment.
Well, you know, and it's on my script too, but probably, you know, Maggie messed that up or something. Just kidding.
I just wanted to let you know that public comment was accepted, and it was on our Google form, and no one just signed up for that.
Oh, well, now that's very confusing though, because we did the public comment on this at a public hearing last time, but double layered there. Very good, everybody. Okay. All right, so we'll, the first person to vote is me, myself. Aye. Vice Mayor Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kilgore.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mosley.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roney.
Aye.
Councilwoman Turner.
Aye.
Councilwoman Whistler.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our last item of new business regards boards and commissions, and I'm going to turn it over to the Vice Mayor.
All righty. Boards and commissions met this morning. We made the following recommendation for appointment. For the African American Heritage Commission, the committee recommends appointment of Stephen Blunt. Is there a second?
Second.
Right, with a motion and a second, I'll do a roll call vote for approval. Mayor Manheimer. Aye. Councilwoman Mosley.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Councilwoman Kilgore.
Aye.
Councilwoman Whistler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roney.
Aye.
Councilwoman Turner.
Aye.
Right, the motion carries. For, for the Board of Adjustment, there was a vacancy for an alternate seat. There were no applications received, so we'll readvertise. For the Civic Center Commission, the committee recommends the appointment of Yvonne Cook Riley. Can I get a second?
Second.
This is second. Sorry.
Kim, is she on a second? No?
It was Antoinette, but whoever.
Oh, it was like, everybody's mic was open, so I couldn't really tell. All right, Antoinette.
I spoke up too, but Antoinette, yeah, right.
With a motion and a second.
Same. Okay.
I'll do a roll call vote for approval. Councilwoman Mosley.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Councilwoman Whistler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kilgore.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roney.
Aye.
Councilwoman Turner.
Aye.
And Mayor Manheimer.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. For Human Relations Commission, the committee recommends the appointment of Marilyn Raynor to one seat, and we're going to readvertise for the second seat. Can I get a second?
This is Kim's second.
All right, with a motion and a second, I'll do a roll call vote for approval. War.
Aye.
All right, I think.
Are we frozen?
There you go. Frozen a bit. Councilwoman Whistler.
Aye.
Maybe it's on my end.
You're frozen.
Councilwoman Mosley heard an aye for you. Oh. I'll kill my video and see if we have action after that. So I called Councilwoman Whistler, Kilgore, Mosley, Mayor Manheimer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roney.
Aye.
Councilwoman Turner.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries. All right, this afternoon, we met around 2:30. For council, we held interviews for three seats on the Buncombe County Tourism Development Authority and two seats on the Planning and Zoning Commission. We're going to break this down a bit. For TDA, we'll do a vote on the two seats at 101 plus. We interviewed three individuals. And I almost feel like doing a tally here instead of doing a recommendation. Maggie, do you have my back here? Okay. So we'll just, everybody give me your two. Councilwoman Turner.
Is this for the 100 plus?
This is 100 plus. We interviewed Matthew Lehman, Pratik Bhatta, and Michael Lussick.
I'm going to go Lussick and Lehman.
All right, Councilwoman Roney.
Lussick and Bhatta.
Councilwoman Kilgore.
Lussick and Bhatta. Pratik, Pratik.
Okay, Councilwoman Whistler.
Lussick and Lehman.
Councilwoman Mosley.
I have Matthew and Lussick.
All right.
Matthew Lehman's his last name.
Sorry, thanks. Lehman and Lussick.
Okay, and Mayor?
Lussick Lehman.
And myself, Lussick Lehman. And it looks like Lehman Lussick are our two.
Correct.
Bingo, we did it. Okay, let's move on to the seat for 100 or less. And do I have a motion? There's no need to do a tally on that one. Do I have a motion for, to approve appointment?
Shanika, I'd make a, this is when I'd make a motion for Terry Crosby.
Larry Crosby?
Larry.
Larry.
I'm sorry, Larry, I apologize.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, with a motion and a second, I'll do a roll call vote for approval. Let's go Councilwoman Whistler.
Aye.
Kilgore.
Aye.
Roney.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Manheimer.
Aye.
Mosley.
Aye.
And myself, motion carries. Now let's go back to the tally vote for P and Z. We interviewed, I think we interviewed four individuals on this afternoon. So we'll just do a tally on your top two. And we'll start with Councilwoman Mosley.
And if you only have one.
Yeah, I didn't really say that, but you know.
I was going to say, I only have one, and it's Jeffrey Barton.
Jeffrey Barton, Mayor?
I only have one, and it's Jeffrey Barton.
Okay. Councilwoman Whistler.
Jeffrey Barton. And Vice Mayor, I would just ask that, rather than, you know, if somebody gets more votes, that I, I would add the motion that we readvertise for the second position.
Okay, heard. Councilwoman Kilgore.
Barton and Bussy.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Barton and, is it Bussy or Bussy? Last name? Kenna?
Okay, got it. Councilwoman Roney.
Barton and Wilcox.
Barton and Wilcox. Turner?
Only one, Barton, and we advertise.
Barton and myself, Barton and Wilcox. So we have, of course, Barton is in. We have one for Bussy and two for Wilcox.
So we can readvertise. And then also, there were two people that weren't able to show up today to the interview, so maybe we can capture them in the second round as well. Sher, Sher, I came, okay, and Roosevelt Harbin was the other person.
So if we do readvertise, that means that even the ones who weren't appointed today are still in the running. Correct.
Yeah, I mean, technically, sure. They're still eligible. Yes.
Okay, so Jeffrey Barton is the appointed person for P and Z, and we'll readvertise to fill the second seat. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, this brings us to the informal discussion of public comment portion of our agenda. And I'll read the instructions. Staff will now connect live calls from our speaker queue for informal discussion and public comment. Again, we are only taking callers who signed up in advance. Callers, you will first hear staff inform council that you're next to speak. Then you will hear an automated message letting you know you are unmuted and live in the meeting. You may begin speaking after the automated message. If you accidentally drop out of the speaker queue, just redial the number and meeting code. Press star three to rejoin the speaker queue. You'll have three minutes to comment, and at the end of the three minutes, you will hear a bell, and staff will ask you to wrap up your comment. And we have five folks at least signed up to speak, so staff, I'll turn it over to you to bring on our callers.
Our first caller is Rachel Bliss of downtown Asheville.
The city of Kingsport and putting together a proclamation to observe International Day of Peace. That will be a week from today, and we'll have an observation at, on Zoom this year, and I invite you all to join us. But one part of the proclamation that we gave the city was left out, and I want to read that if I have time. Whereas, in this moment of escalating climate change and the COVID pandemic, we lament that there have been political and economic actions taken by our elected representatives that threaten the health and well-being of the people, of the environment, and of our democratic process. We specifically call attention to the Buncombe County Commissioner's decision to provide millions in tax incentives and other inducements to Pratt Whitney, part of Raytheon Technologies, one of the largest and most profitable weapons merchants in the world. We believe that it is not the best interest of our community to align with industries with a record of environmental harm that choose profit over life. Again, I say that this is our 12th year of working with the city. We had 28 signers to our proclamation, and all of our signers wanted this verse in the proclamation. So just let me express my displeasure that it was left out. Thank you.
Counsel, our next caller is Jonathan Wayne Scott. Jonathan, your line is now open.
Hey, everybody, it's Jonathan Wayne Scott again. I just wanted to call and thank Councilwoman Mosley for her comments last meeting during the informal comment and discussion. Bringing a little discussion to it. Usually, it's a little one-way with people just saying what they got to say and not hearing much back from council. So thank you very much for that, and I appreciate that your primary message there was that you were, you know, had the back of your community and there to amplify the unheard voices. There was also the element of some frustration with, you know, hearing white people come into council talking about black problems and not really having the right information. And, you know, here I am, a white guy calling in about the reparations and whatnot. I wish it'd been on council in 2019 along with Vijay Kapoor because of the conversation again that we had regarding our charter change and renewing our at-large election system. Could have used a little bit more critical thinking, a little bit more, you know, feedback on all of that. As it turns out, you know, that whole conversation was held by a lot of white people bringing a lot of bad information to city council about the difference between at-large elections and district elections. There was a white woman from Swannanoa, doesn't even live here, didn't live here then, doesn't live here now, who came and said that, you know, the black population or the voting population was only 3%, and that wasn't true. She said that the North Carolina General Assembly that liberated us from our at-large election system was the most racist general assembly in the United States. And, and that included eight black senators that voted to bring district elections to Asheville. So it was an incredibly frustrating process, but, you know, we'll revisit it. And, you know, just called in to talk about that a little bit. Looks like it's going to be a short night. I don't know if anybody wants to get together after this. Go out for some wings and some snacks if you want to, but anyway, have a great night, everybody. Thanks.
Our next caller is Florence Armstrong of South Asheville.
I'm a black woman living here in South Asheville, and I first just want to say how excited and proud I am that we have three women of color, Councilwoman Sandra Kilgore, Councilwoman Antoinette Mosley, and Vice Mayor Shanika Smith on the board. I know that you all are working hard and doing great things, along with all the other council members who are working hard to make change. However, I'm on tonight to speak to the entire council, city council, and other entities in Asheville to encourage, to push beyond, you know, just acceptance and inclusion, but actually listening to and following the suggestions and plans that are made by the black women who are serving on the council, because they know and speak to and understand what's needed within the black community. Me personally, I have learned with and worked alongside and taught various white people throughout my entire life. And I've learned to see and navigate the good-intentioned white people, been able to see and navigate the overt and racist white people, and also work with those who simply either choose or don't know and choose to be ignorant to their role and how society views and treats black people. Specifically speaking to the July 22 council meeting, Councilwoman Mosley shared some alarming statistics about the plight of black women and our safety here in Asheville, and it was regarding suspending the hiring of new police. And I agree with a lot of what she stated and what she shared, and I don't agree with the idea of defunding the police. What I do like to see, what many of us in the black community would like to see, is true police reform. We want there to be better training, we want there to be more efforts made to, for the police departments to get to know the people in the communities that they're serving. We want to see more programs and collaborations with different groups of color and different intersections so that we can address the issues and resolve the issues of socialized and learned implicit bias and racial fear that continue to unnecessarily take the lives of black and brown people. And we know this is a process, we know it cannot happen overnight, but when issues arise within the black community, we really need to turn to the black community, talk to us, find out what we need and what we're looking for. I understand that sometimes seemingly well-intentioned progressive white people want to step in and step in front and support and help, and we don't need you to step in front. What we need is for you to walk alongside and to listen and to help and offer support in that way, but know that we know what is best for our community and what we need. And so I thank you for the fight that you are putting forward and are putting forth, but really want to just encourage you and push and ask for you to listen and to hear black voices and brown voices, and let us stand in front and fight for what we need. And lastly, I have one quick question. Wanted to ask, has it been verified that the recent person elected to the Asheville City School Board of Education, that member who was set to leave on October 31st, has it been verified that they are still an Asheville resident? Thank you.
Your caller.
Counsel, our final caller on the line this evening is Nina Tobish of Shiloh.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor and members. My name is Nina Tobish, I live in Shiloh. First, I'd like to thank the council and city staff for the ongoing implementation of the tax grant program. I'm happy to say that I personally have been able to apply and receive a tax grant, and I'm deeply grateful for that. My comment with respect to the process of the tax grant is the following. I'm hoping that city staff has in place a robust system of tracking these grants so that as citizens, we can understand where the funds were actually deployed. To that end, I would hope that you are all collecting demographic information of recipients, age, sex, race, income, what neighborhoods are receiving these funds, and where the funds were directed, whether it was to pay utilities or mortgages or tax bills. I think it would be incredibly helpful if there was follow-up in the form of a survey of recipients. Ask them what their experience was like in the process, what could have been done differently or better, and also to survey the community at large to get a sense of whether our citizenry understood that the process was in place and how to go about applying for it. I imagine, and I, I hope, that the city has already got plans to do such a follow-up report. But I think when we try something interesting and innovative like this, that it's really important that we look at all the metrics associated with it so that we can understand the impact. And it's a way of tracking where the money went, who received the benefit of it, and how, if such a program were to be offered again in the future, the city can be assured that the money went where it was most needed. Once again, I'm thrilled that this process is underway. It's not exactly the way I hoped it would be done, with a more reparations-oriented bent to it, but I'm nonetheless grateful, and I know that there are many citizens who will feel the same way. Thank you for your time this evening.
Okay, Counsel, we did have five people sign up to speak, but I guess we only had four call in, so that's okay. We do have a closed session this evening, so I'm gonna turn it over to Councilwoman Roni to read the closed session motion. And then we'll need to log out and log back in to the closed session link.
I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. One, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. The statutory authorization is contained in NC General Statute 143-318.11A1. The laws that make the information privileged and confidential are North Carolina General Statute 143-318.10E and North Carolina General Statute 168-168. And two, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with a respect to the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to the handling of the following matters: City of Asheville versus Mark Byrd, and Joy Ponder versus City of Asheville. The statutory authorization is contained in the NC General Statute 143-318.11A3.
Do we have a motion and a second? Anybody?
I'll second, it's Gwen.
Okay, and I guess we'll do a roll call vote. Councilwoman Roni?
I.
Councilwoman Turner?
I. I said "I," am I stalled?
Esther's frozen, it looked like Esther's frozen.
It looks like Esther's frozen.
Yeah, Esther's frozen.
I, Antoinette.
And Gwen will say "I."
I, Sandra Kilgore.
And I, Shanika Smith.
Now it's just.
Thanks, sorry.
We have, we have two Esters.
Huh.
Now Esther and then.
All right, we're adjourned.